For that extended pause there, we had to wait a little bit till seven o'clock to start the main meeting. I just wanted to report that we were in executive session. There was some general discussion on homeschooling and legal advice. One vote was taken and approved for homeschooling.
I make a motion to seal the minutes of executive session.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Awesome. Could everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Now for the probably the best part of the night, we did student and staff recognition. So Beth, take it away.
Good evening. Tonight, let's celebrate DECA. In February, forty-six members of the Pontigan City High School DECA Club competed at Johnson Wales University at the Rhode Island Career Development Conference. Our DECA kids experienced record success with nineteen overall individual and team medalists. So first of all, you get a congratulations. The majority of competitors compete in role-playing, team decision-making scenarios, which are averaged with a hundred questions, ninety-minute exam. Competitors take one of seven business-related cluster exams. Our very own senior, Jake Seroyes, who earned second place in the entrepreneurship series competition, also received special recognition for earning Rhode Island's highest overall exam score with an impressive ninety-five percent. Jake outperformed well over four hundred test takers in Rhode Island. His younger brother, Brady Seroyes, also received special recognition for earning the highest test score in the marketing management exam. Jake and Brady, come on down. Congratulations. Congratulations. Blossom child.
Congrats.
First-year DECA member, Marley Bellotti, ninth grader, earned second place in the apparel accessories marketing series. Marley, come on down. Junior Nathan Broder secured second place in the automotive service marketing series. Nathan? Congratulations. Now, he's a junior, the one I'm thinking about. Will Dwyer and Liam Dixon have served as the co-presidents of the DECA Club this year. They joined club secretary and president-elect Nathan Blaze to compete in the Business Growth Plan Research Project. They earned first place in the state of Rhode Island. Will, Liam, and Nathan. Congratulations. Cousins, Arico Vinagro and Louis Vinagro paired up to compete in the Hospitality Services Team Decision-Making Event. They earned second place in Rhode Island. Arico and Louis. Nathan West, eleventh grade, earned second place in the Human Resource Management Series Event. Fellow PHS DECA teammate, Simon Ashman, tenth grader, earned third place. Nathan and Simon. Wait a minute. Nathan's gonna get a special call down to your office, huh? No, Simon?
Okay.
First-year competitors, Tyler Bellman, Sam Russell, and Wyatt Ocho. All eleventh graders secured a third-place finish in the Integrated Marketing Campaign Product Series. This is a research-focused event similar to what you might see on TV, Shark Tank. So Tyler and Wyatt. Wait a minute. Okay, congratulations. Another team of first-year competitors, Madeline McLaughlin and Olivia Pickard, both eleventh graders, led a first-time Pontigan City sweep of the marketing management event by earning first place in Rhode Island. Let's honor them first, Madeline and Olivia. Congratulations. Friends, Brady Seroyes and junior and senior Joshua Steer added to the sweep by earning second place. Brady and Josh. You get another call down? And finishing this week, eleventh graders Briella Bailey and Jason D'Amico secured third place. Smart pretty, smart pretty. Students' teams earning a first or second-place finish, who also score a combined average of seventy percent on their respective exams, qualify to compete at DECA's International Career and Development Conference in Anaheim, California, this April. Congratulations to all of you. You're so smart. That's so proud. Oh, that was really bad. Alex and Linda, Alex McLeod, Linda Murphy. You guys know how important they are, so they're the coordinators, advisors to the DECA Club.
So I always say this every year when we talk about DECA. So I was a teacher and I was a DECA advisor for ten years, so I know what that, the responsibility you have in getting these students to this point. And so impressed by those of you that have your DECA blazer on and your professional dress. You guys look fantastic. So such a, you represent Gloucester and the region and Gloucester so well. Thank you. Your parents should be proud of you. We are. Great.
All right, we're gonna move quickly through the next few items till we get to the cell tower request, but that'll be like three items from now, so you don't have to stick around too, too long. I'd entertain a motion regarding the meeting minutes.
Move to approve the minutes of the open meeting on February sixth, two thousand twenty-four.
Having heard a motion and a second, I'd entertain discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
I move to approve the minutes of the executive session meeting on February sixth, two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Approval of monthly bills.
Move to approve the monthly bills dated February first to February twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-four, in the amount of one million, two-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand, nine-hundred-and-ninety-four dollars and thirteen cents.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? One item I did want to add in my review of those monthly bills is just to continue to flag that we are running a little bit over, a lot bit over, on oil, and that's related to some of our heating projects, and that will come up again later as we start to discuss capital projects. So I just wanted to alert that. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed? All right, motion passes. Director of Finance report. All right, everyone should have that report in their packet. Anything you want to share?
I don't have anything to share, just if anybody has any questions.
Anyone? All right, well, thank you for sharing that. Keep up the great work. All right, now on to the approval of cell tower funds. Nope, nope, shoot.
So I move-
Wait, one sec, sorry. I jumped too far. Approval of the PHS DECA qualifying students to attend the international conference, or the international conference in Anaheim, California.
Move to approve the PHS DECA students to attend the international conference in Anaheim, California.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Oh, that'd be great, yeah, we'd love to hear a presentation. Why don't you guys come right up here? We have a microphone.
And turn the mic on.
And let us know who you are and where you're from.
That's how it gets recorded, so if you push the microphone on, it'll at least record that we are speaking.
All right, so good evening, Dr. Palazzo and members of the school committee. I am Nathan Blaze, secretary of the DECA Club and current eleventh grader, and we want to thank you for allowing us to speak here this evening.
I'm Will Dwyer, a senior and current co-president of the DECA Club.
I'm Liam Dixon. I'm also a senior and co-president of the club.
We wanted to first thank you all for your continued support for the DECA Club. We have all greatly benefited from the club and the rigorous programming here at Pontigan City High School and the CTE programs.
We cannot thank Mr. McLeod and Ms. Murphy enough. They have been so much more than just counselors for us on firsthand. I have witnessed all of the work that they put in towards this club, and they have been actively involved during our entire high school tenure.
And we're also thankful for our unofficial third advisor, Ms. Ricketson, for her willingness to help us out. It seems like every DECA class is really there.
Well, I'm Brady Seroyes, I'm eleventh grade. As you know, I score second in my marketing and management category, as well as my test score in that. And as some of you may have heard, DECA has continued its success on the international and national stage. Since its inception, say, three years ago, we have moved on to becoming fifty-plus members in the DECA Club, which is one of the largest clubs in Pontigan City right now.
Furthermore, at the recent Rhode Island DECA State Competition and Convention in February, Johnson and Wales University, mentioned before, Pontigan City High School, we set a new club record with twenty individual medalists, individuals and teams who either won or placed at their respective competitions. Those meeting competency and placing first or second, like all of us, are now planning on attending nationals and representing Pontigan City High School at the International Career Development Conference in Anaheim, California, to compete once more again on the national level.
All right, now, real risen we're here. Real risen, we're a piece of bitch. We're here seeking financial assistance through the cell phone tower fund to support our trip, as well as bring positive attention to the DECA Club here at Pontigan City High School. We are requesting ten thousand, four hundred and forty-eight dollars in matching funds.
Again, we want to thank you for your time, consideration, and support, both now and hopefully in the future, even after you leave.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
That was great. Thank you so much. Before you sneak off, let's see if anyone has any questions for the club. No? All right, so we're gonna break this up into two different votes. The first one is for the trip itself, and the second one is for the cell tower funds. And I also just want to add, that was a great presentation. Thank you for sharing that, and keep up the great work to you all, as well as the rest of the club.
Brendan, I will say one thing.
Sure.
So the only thing I'll say is, for those of you that don't know it, when these students go to ICDC, and this year it's in Anaheim, they're gonna be there with like hundreds of thousands of kids, literally. It is overwhelming, the amount of students that are there. And one thing I always ask is, what is, what do you have to trade? Do you have a pin that you're gonna be trading?
Yeah, so we actually, so we started off the competition with ten Rhode Island pins.
Yeah.
Rhode Island pins are very, very valuable.
They are. They love them.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
As well as a sale cap, so we actually discussed a little bit of entrepreneurship trip. We might go to a dollar store one day, we could buy something, sell it in ICDC. ICDC is essentially like Gillette Stadium, and in there, it's twice a dollar to pay equal to sell it at ten dollars.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's sort of like a market trick, a two-step, a little bit from the, yeah, actually, me and I went to the ICDC competition last year, Orlando, Florida, and, you know, we're just a little Rhode Island state, I think we had, what, seven members last year? We're in a hotel with people from, where were we, Alabama?
Yeah.
And there was like a hundred-plus members from there.
Some of them, yeah, the Midwest really, and Canada always has a huge contingent.
Oh, yeah, they do.
But the pin is the big thing, and it's like that icebreaker. It's the thing that gets the kids to all get to know each other, because you go up to each other, and you introduce yourselves, and you make friendships.
Absolutely.
And then you trade your pins, so I think that's just awesome, and it's such a wonderful experience. Just be safe.
Yeah, now, heck, one of, yeah, one of the factors, like, people for some reason, especially from the South, all across the country, they love the way we talk. Every single person, they love the way we're talking.
Well, me being from Michigan, I didn't bring that with me when I took my students, but anyway, yeah, no, just, you know, I just get excited for you because I remember the excitement my students used to have when we would go, and it is really a wonderful thing. But in this world today, just be safe and don't give your teachers any gray hair.
All right, thank you for that. So we have a motion on the floor and a second to approve the trip itself. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That motion passes. Now, to the second part, we have the request for cell tower funds.
So Brendan, I just want to say something, and these students don't know this, but we have a policy sub-
Before we get into that, we should make a motion and a second, that we can discuss it, if someone wants to make the motion.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to approve this cell tower request of ten thousand, four hundred and forty-eight dollars to attend the DECA International Career Development Conference in Anaheim, California, as presented in the paper.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second now, I'm sorry, feel free to discuss.
Well, so I think maybe, I don't know, these students don't know, and they're advisors when they put this request forward, but the policy subcommittee has passed a new policy that we're asking no one to request more than two thousand dollars at a time.
It's ten thousand per, like-
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
I thought it was-
Max of ten thousand per, like, what was it?
Per year.
Semester, we'll say.
Oh, okay, so we did approve a max of ten?
Correct.
Okay, then I'm wrong on that.
And we already spent some of it, less.
That is a max per withdrawal from the fund itself, not per club.
Right, not per club.
Yes. And what is remaining from that, do we know? How much have we approved so far, and what is-
Total FY twenty-four request, forty-one thousand, four hundred and six, is that right?
No, no, you had, you passed a policy where you said ten thousand dollars from, for the second semester.
Yeah, we're trying to figure out what-
Last meeting, you gave funds to an organization.
So we've approved thirty-seven hundred so far?
Thirty-five hundred.
How many, was it?
Thirty-five hundred.
So we have sixty-five hundred remaining.
Yes.
For the rest of the school year, for all clubs.
Right. Somewhere I saw the number two thousand. Which is why that I think that is a men-
So, last week we talked about two thousand, but then we weren't gonna do anything until the fall.
Okay.
Yeah.
You have sixty-five hundred dollars right now.
Yeah. I was just gonna answer. That's sort of the bad news, is that we only have sixty-five hundred dollars to give out to, Beth, go ahead.
So in accordance with our policy, we do have sixty-five hundred left. We do have seventy in the fund itself.
Right.
Yeah, go ahead, Beth.
I think we make an exception. This isn't like a little thing, this is huge, that they make nationals. It's a once-in-a-lifetime experience for them, they earned it, they deserve it, so I vote we give them ten thousand, four hundred and forty-eight.
The only thing-
They've done an extensive, I know they've done significant things.
Fourteen thousand before the ten, the half, the fifty percent match? Okay.
That's hard to raise.
I'm just curious, what type of fundraising activities did you guys do?
Part of our fundraising has been over a period because we haven't taken as many people in a very long time. We haven't taken as many, so some of it's been building up, we've been averaging around eight, but we did another fundraiser this year that built up another eight thousand dollars. It's a bunch.
Okay. No, I agree, I think, obviously, this is awesome, and I do, like, I understand that they need the full amount, but we do have to consider future requests for the last three months of the years, I mean, of this school year, that if we make this exception, which is fine, that we may have to continue doing that for the rest of the year.
I think, I think until we have a firm policy, we know what we're doing, then-
But Beth, we do have a firm policy. We all voted in favor of that policy last meeting, when we all sat like this, it was what, nine zero eight zero one, or something along those lines? It was in the minutes that we actually talked about this policy, and we've talked about it previously for the past couple of months. So unfortunately, I feel that we do have a firm policy, because the thing that I'm afraid of, and I completely agree, DECA, you guys are amazing, but the way that I also see it is that if we do, and I agree, they definitely deserve to go, the problem is, is that once this money runs out, again, we have seventy thousand, again, but this year so far, according to our packet, we've already spent forty-three thousand dollars worth of it. If we have those amounts again, what happens when all the funds go out? We get twenty thousand dollars a year for cell tower funds. At that point, we're not gonna be able to go on any trips, there's not gonna be any music festivals, nothing.
Well, if you look at it that way, when it gets down to, we get twenty grand a year, that's it.
But that's what we're trying to do now.
But you have to look other places for the cell tower. The reason that fund got so big is that we weren't taking it, many clubs and many athletic teams were taking advantage of it. Once, I believe it was Mike Joyce who started this, like, whoa, we could do this, so, and we said at the time, okay, now everybody's gonna come and ask for money, so why we have it? I think we give it to these kids for a once-in-a-lifetime, and then when there is no money, then we can say, there is no money. But it's hard to sit on sixty-five, when these kids have worked hard and won national acclaim, not to approve it.
Can I ask the superintendent a question? Do you have a list or any just anticipated requests based on last year's requests?
I don't have any anticipated requests, but last year was, we had a big production, there was a lot of money that went towards that. I think, I agree with what everyone is saying, I knew a new policy was just passed, however, we would not have anticipated that this many students would have qualified, and I understand what you're saying, but I don't think they should be the ones who are at a disadvantage when we do have the funds sitting there. Ultimately, you decide that, but they've worked hard, it is, it is a club outside on their extra time, and this is a pretty prestigious acknowledgement. I'm proud of them, I know you all said you're proud of them, I think that if this is the time that you can make an exception, this would be a really good one.
I fully agree, I just-
I think that this year is almost like a probationary year for that policy. I mean, it's new, it's a change in behavior for a lot of our clubs, a lot of our advisors to understand how that fundraising cycle goes, and I think we should be sympathetic to that. I mean, to answer your question, Aaron, when we run out of money in the cell tower funds, then, yeah, then we're down to the ten thousand a semester, we are doing what we're doing. But I, I think that for this year, for requests such as this, which are built into the programmatic planning, that we treat this as sort of a probationary year for the new policy, they're aware of what it will be next year, moving forward, so they can plan accordingly, and we don't hold them back because of it.
I agree.
I think it's a better way to spend the money.
Yeah, and they've worked really, really hard, and they didn't go into this knowing that we were gonna hold them back on not being able to go, and I wouldn't feel good about that at all. And so I, you know, I think, you know, policies are there, but they're, they're there to be sometimes questioned and altered, so I would vote to, to give them what they're, they're only asking for half, so it's just, it's expensive to get them out there, so, yeah.
My only other thought, and this is not to minimize their work, but just in preparation for these changes, you know, we have to seriously consider to the last, the last request, although it was done in the same month that we approved the policy, that I think, correct me if I'm wrong, was for a music trip, that was a larger number of students, and we gave them thirty-five hundred dollars. So I just want to be mindful of the past decisions under the same circumstances, again, not to minimize the hard work, but just to be realistic and fair. So I don't know, but I am, I am in full support of the total request, but I'm just, you know, voicing that.
Thank you. Go ahead, Beth.
The only issue with the musical trip, is they go on those trips, and they spend a year, that's part of the joint cars, if you go, you go to Six Flags or a certain trip, this is a national award, once in a lifetime, here, of course, every year, they know what these steps are.
And they have to earn that, they have to earn that, and I think that's a-
Anyone else have anything to add to the discussion?
Brendan, I would just, like, not about the discussion, but I would just ask that when we do speak, that we turn our mics on, please, just so we all have records in that way, just to keep it, just for purposes, but I completely, thank you.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention?
I just want to say, opposed, and I would be in support of the sixty-five hundred, but just to have another thought.
Abstentions? All right, the motion passes six to one. Safe travels, make us proud.
Renee, has a notice gone out?
Oh, I didn't get to do, so this is the point in the meeting where we want to thank all of our DECA students, family, friends, supporters for coming, but you do not have to stay if you don't wish to. We are very supportive of your endeavors and congratulate you, but you don't have to suffer through the rest of the meeting unless you want to.
Yeah, they're going into business, at least they saw this conversation.
All right, so we're going to have a quick overview of the CTE program from Dr. Palazzo.
So some of you had asked for this to be on the agenda a few months ago, maybe two months ago. Ms. Sarkis, oh, sorry. Ms. Sarkis would have been here, a director of student support, she has a family emergency that she needed to get to this evening, so I handed out a flyer, which is really just a quick glimpse and infographic, just so you have some of the information, sharing what our CTE enrollment is, just about, three out of four Pontigan City students- Three out of four Pontigan City students are enrolled in the program, which is about seventy-five percent of our students.
Bring the mic closer to your face.
Sorry. We have just about seventy-five percent of our students are enrolled in one of our CTE programs. Thirty percent of our out-of-district enrollment comes from eighteen different cities and towns. If you look at the two bottom numbers, it's just the two bottom charts, graphs, it's just a breakdown of the number of students in each program. And if you look at the bottom right, it's our out-of-district, our in-district, and our total student. So, again, about seventy-five percent of our students are enrolled in one or more CTE programs. The really cool thing on the back of this, and we will give this out to community members, those QR codes at the bottom. If you scan a QR code, it gives you a flyer on each program. We have a little bit of difficulty with the construction management one, so let's hold on to that one. But we, we had twelve, and then this year, we were approved for two more. So, starting in the fall, we have an education program, and we have a firefighting program. I'm going to pause before Mr. Stanley presents, and I'm just going to stop for a moment and say, congratulations. Mr. Stanley is the only CTE-certified teacher in the state, and we are the only school to have a firefighting program. And his efforts were phenomenal, and that's why we have the program coming to Pontigan City High School in the fall. So- Mr. Stanley?
I don't really need one of those, but that's all right. So, I come to you with thirty-three years of experience on the volunteer side. I've been to every major conflagration in the state as far as mutual aid is concerned. So, I'm bringing that wealth of experience, that passion, to the classroom. As a volunteer, Foster, Gloucester, Warren, Bristol, most of your towns throughout the city, you're a volunteer through the state. They're struggling to find membership. And the reason why they're struggling to find membership is the inordinate amount of time that it takes to actually train. So, if you're asking somebody to leave their job, leave their home in the middle of the night, and then go out each and every week and train for six hours, that's a lot. So, volunteerism on the fireside has sort of fallen on the wayside. But it is a massive tradition worth saving, and it saves tax dollars. The taxpayer, they don't even know whether we're professional or volunteer when we go to their house, nor do they care. If your house is on fire, you don't care if I'm getting paid for the job and have a union bug or not. You care whether I put out the fire and keep your stuff safe and save your family. So, we've partnered with the Patchett Fire Department, Mooseup Valley, my home department, Warren, to develop really the first-of-its-kind CTE program in the state. You benefit the fact of having myself, Charlie Stockwell, Eric Rotondo, volunteers on staff who teach. You're not really going to find that in any other community, except maybe Bristol and Warren. So, that's important. So, I started putting pieces together. It's a fantastic career. You're going to start out in your beginning years, sixty, seventy, eighty thousand dollars plus overtime. We take them on a field trip. They go to the airport. Those guys are pulling in a hundred and twenty thousand. They didn't go to college. So, that's one of the roles of CTE, right? Not every kid wants to go to college. Not every kid is necessarily book smart, we'll say. But they have a talent and a drive, and they want to do something. And for a lot of them, this fits that mold. So, they're going to get trained. They're going to get certified. They're going to go through everything that they would as if they were going to Rhode Island Fire Academy. They will come out with their Fire One certification, their Fire Two certification. They'll come out with their hazardous materials, national grid, and a whole many others that I can't think of. Dave? So, orientation, safety, fire behavior, ventilation, loss control, these are the things that we talk about. You can keep flipping through. We're going to get to the exciting stuff, right? So, it's a pathway, right? We have certain goals. I think you can stop right there, Dave. And we can see, they took them on a field trip, and Matt Delair is interacting with one of our students, who is one of those typical kids who probably is going to be an itch in the classroom. But I had fantastic success with him. Why? Because he's putting on the turnout gear. He's pulling the hose. He's hands-on. He's learning as he's going. And they're hitting all those things, from academics to career pathways, various standards. So, are young, are a reflection of what our future will be, right? I want them to be little mini-me's. So, here we have some more students. Again, we take them out, we throw water. We took them from the fire museum. So, they get a sense of what the history and the culture of the fire service is. Keep going, right? To strive, realize the vision and work to live up to those values by prioritizing human connection with the agencies and organizations that work every day, every hour, to help the people of Rhode Island to live safely, healthy, and flourish lives. That was the mission statement of the Champlin Foundation. This program married up so well that they gave you a hundred thousand dollars. That suits up fifteen kids head to toe in gear, air packs, and equipment. I have one. Through the connections that I have in the fire service, shaking hands, kissing babies over the years as a recovering politician. I also got Greenwood Fire Apparatus to donate a fire engine. Your problem's going to be where to put it. All right, keep going. So, here's some things. You were tying into a hydrant, which you guys don't have out here. That's why we've got to go to Warren. All right. Another picture of the museum, Al Gallinelli, the former chief, right? Seventy-six years old. He's still going to fires. We have a major conflagration this weekend. He drove the truck. I was the first one in, pulled the line. That's the equipment that the grant bought, turnout gears, helmets, Scott air packs, boots, mask, hose, blitz nozzle, and other equipment as well, right? And here's some of the things that they do, right? You got to go through, you got to train. So, you have an obstacle course. The first one there, you're walking across basically a ceiling. The next one's an trapping scenario where you're going through. So, if this were ever to catch on fire, things are falling down, you could easily get yourself trapped up. Next one? No, no. Go back. I'm sorry. Too excited. I shouldn't have brought that away. So, that would be a refuge drill. So, they're in a room. You sound out. You find out where the studs are. You break through. And then, you get your, my fat body, through that hole. Remember, it's sixteen-inch uncentered studs. Hey, as large as I am, I can still do that. Steps, that also, I don't know if it's a good view. There's a platform that it drops down, so if you're kneeling along, the fire was in the basement, and you lost the floor, and you fell through, it gives you that sensation, what to look out for, so the spongy floor. You can see me popping through a tube, right? I don't fit through the tube. I got to take the air pack off, but I got to remain on air. So, these are all skills that the students learn. We have the Palmer House, which will show fire behavior. You move those pull drawers around. You can see where the fire will go. Basement extrication. And then, that one is ventilating a rooftop, I believe, and one guy's going in. So, hands-on, fully dressed, ready to go. So, when they graduate as seniors, they'll be able to join Mooseup Valley, South Foster, Gloucester, without any issue. They will come out with those skills and sign off for me and the chiefs and the chief from Warren. So, they'll have that all knocked out. They are more than prepared when they go out to apply for Cranston or, because they're going to have to go through the Fire Academy. The problem in the state of Rhode Island is, let's say, I sign up, I'm Cranston, and I join, and I decide I want to do a lateral move, let's say, westward. I'm going to have to go through the Fire Academy all over again. It's the only state that does that. I don't know why. More shenanigans above my head than the chicken stick hat, but that, that, that's, that's a fact. But they're going to come out of here with those skills, with those certifications, ready to attend. And they're going to be much more successful at the academy. Because they don't necessarily have the note-taking skills, right? And this will give them leverage and a head up of their other students that are around them. They will have already gone through this if they come here. And we are going to pull from other areas that you probably wouldn't normally see. But you're looking at a group of individuals who have a love of community, have a love of learning, but might not be necessarily book-learned. It's just a great opportunity to help the community and help the fire service. That's it in a nutshell. But usually, I come here and grovel for money. I don't need anything from you, right? Everything's paid for at this point. So, that's, that was, that was the icing on the cake. You know, there was a lot of work to get that grant. And I'm not as polished as I am because I didn't necessarily expect I was going to be here, so, there we go. Any questions?
That was great. That was great. I mean, thank you very much for spearheading that effort. Did anyone have questions for Mr. Stanley?
I just have a statement. I think that this is an absolutely fantastic program, and I'm looking forward to seeing our students utilize this. I really am. Like, this just sounds absolutely amazing. So, I'm looking forward to giving these students the option.
If I had the opportunity as a kid in high school to do that, I mean, that's the thing that we find. You go through elementary school, right? Stop, drop, and roll. You go to the elementary schools. You do your presentations on fire safety. They're attracted. Ooh, red lights, fire, siren, dah. By the time they get to middle school, we've lost touch with those students because we're not, there's no pathway in. And this gives you the pathway in. So, you know, they're real, they're doing real stuff. I know she's going to have a heart attack when they do ladder bailout drills out of the second-floor window. I just won't do it here. You know, but they're going to get all that experience, not just, you know, pulling a line, but- And they were impressive this year. I had a majority of individuals who were, for the most part, I think timid at first, didn't really know what they were getting themselves into. And this is the first group of people, and I'm talking adults too, that didn't go into the situation where they were smoked up, and they just ripped that mask off their face, all right? Because it's confining. It's dark. You don't know where you are, and they panic. These kids didn't panic. Because they had me all along the way, building up to that moment, where we don't have that opportunity. Because we're only getting them two hours a night, maybe every other week. So, even the adults do, I ain't doing that. That's, that's what you're here for. You're here to fight fires, not eat clams. You know, so, you know, getting that social aspect from the volunteer fire, I think they understand that. But there's actually a job to do, and getting them trained to do that job, if we start them early, better, better for you and better for me and our communities. Because we have a group of kids who are captivated, I think, by, you know, who doesn't love a shiny red fire truck with red lights, a siren, and, you know? Anything else?
I think this is good, too, as we, we look to find programs, I don't remember the word, but where it's-
Substantially similar.
It's not substantially similar.
Not substantially similar?
There's nothing else right now.
Yeah. And on top of that, I think about the surrounding areas that are volunteer, especially if you look into, yeah, over the border, right? Into Connecticut. There's a lot of students, I think, that could fit into this, so.
Other communities will be hard-pressed to pull it off. First off, the initial investments. I mean, you're looking at roughly eighteen thousand per kid just to suit them up. So, I was able to get that grant that's been augmented by other equipment that I've got from other departments, who've, you know, turned over boots and coats and things like that. Some of it will be mismatched, but the new stuff will be new. You know, you're getting a fire engine. I mean, you're talking about, if it's used, right? You're looking at quarter million dollars.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Free.
Fantastic work. It's Chris, right?
Yeah.
Fantastic work. Not to rain on your parade, but what are we looking at next year and the following year budget-wise to keep this program going?
Right now, probably zero dollars. So, your program-
Because will the equipment carry over from year to year, the setups and all that?
Equipment is good by NFPA for fifteen years, ten years, depends on what it is. They're not going into a live-fire situation, so I'll be able to extend that. We are not a NFPA state. We follow the NFPA guidelines, but we're not mandated. So, again, I can stretch that out. A truck, you keep, you keep it, you know, you may have some maintenance costs as far as an oil change. Maybe it gets a flat tire or something.
So, I think it's important for us to know and the community to know that we can afford to keep this program going, so.
You know, your textbooks, your textbooks are still good. They're on version seven. Version eight is probably another three, four years down the line before they come out with that. But even if they did, ISTA does change the book. It's not substantially changing the curriculum. So, I can augment with stuff that I would have coming in ordinarily anyhow.
I think your point is valid with regards to the recurring costs. It seems like we have a couple of years to at least try it out, see how it goes. It seems like a great program, low risk and high reward for the area. And then, when it comes time to perhaps cycle in some new equipment here and there, that's a conversation for the, the future. But I think it's wonderful.
There are other options. You can lease turnout gear, and that's one way. But I tried to do it so that it was no upfront cost whatsoever. And basically, you're stuck with it for what, at least another ten years? So, at least to that long, you've got somebody qualified and the ability.
I would say, too, just on a personal level, the training that you're speaking to is really hard to do once you are no longer in school, or really, once you're holding down a job, which is one of the reasons why, well, one of many reasons why being a volunteer is so difficult, the training and then the time. And the fact that we're turning these folks out, at least ready to go through the academy, ready to be trained, is wonderful, just to help support the local communities.
You know, I started when I was seventeen.
I was demoted to the auxiliary members because I couldn't do the firefighter one training, just because it just wasn't feasible. So, I give all the volunteers a ton of credit. And if anyone wants a raffle ticket, come see me.
And until you need the fire department at your house, thank you. It's a, it's, it's nice to see familiar faces and people who say, we've got, we've got you. So, thank you.
All right. Anyone else?
No. Awesome.
Great, thank you.
Wonderful.
I got to go back over the bridge.
Looks, we can, moving forward, the Passion Project presentation.
So, as Mr. Stanley pointed out, this is, or was, an outstanding example of what a senior might present. The fact that they went through a pathway, and they have all these little certificates along the way and culminating events where they can see to experience. Two months ago, Mark asked for an update. So, when Mark was in high school, we called it a learning stretch. During the XQ grant process in a think-tank room, the idea, now we have pathways, which we did not have in your day, the phrase Passion Project was coined. Some of the things are very similar, but we also are able to differentiate a little bit in that we do have specific pathways that now have projects embedded in them. So, engineering, design and development, they have a culminating event where groups of kids all year long have worked on prototype projects. That's their passion project, if they so choose. They can also do additional things. We have the EMT pathway. Kids sit through that course through W4 for the entire year. They get certificates. They're able to showcase that when they present. Shark Tank in the Business Pathway is the culminating event there. Those students not only present through to industry experts, but then they also do what I call the Pontigan City side of the house, which is, they still need to answer questions. What course do you think we should offer at Pontigan City High School? If you had a course to go back, you probably answered these two. If you had a course you wanted to go back and take again, what would it be? In some cases, a lot of kids say Algebra One. They want the foundation again to then kind of emerge their skills to a higher level in upper-level mathematics. We see a lot more community-based. If you're a Boy Scout and you're doing your Eagle Scout project, that will count now as your passion project. You've put all that time in outside of school. Why not celebrate that? The Girl Scout Gold Award as well. We have a student currently who is redoing the planter base at the end of Van and Wade Road. So, that sign was redone as a passion project years ago. It was illegally taken down, fixed and put back up. And then, the base of it now is going to be beautified. The sign over in the other building several years ago was landscaped. The student also did a campus cleanup at that time. That was back when you were probably in high school. We've tried to embrace the fact that these kids, their beginning of high school is a little rocky. So, you make a little adjustment there, and you kind of say, what is it you really want to do? We have several students that are outshadowing in the elementary schools, and I have to say, Dr. Bedard has been tremendous- And I have to say, Dr. Bedard has been tremendously displacing kids. Some of them go all day on white days out to their internship sort of work. And some of them leave for W4. We have a student who is a proficient Spanish speaker. She goes over to the middle school to work with our ELL teacher, who also comes here on Fridays conveniently during W4. Over time, Beth has been instrumental with the unified component of our school department. She has been a complete support of the students and their presentations. She started with polar plunge and kind of moved and gravitated out with our students. And she still takes students under her wing. And I had an email from a student today that wants to collect money, which I try to stay far away from. But she said Mrs. Keeling would help her at Unified Game. And then those funds get deposited into a student activities fund. That check is then sent out to the agency. She wants to donate to Bradley, not Bradley, Hasbro. Thank you very much. Projects come in, all mixed sizes. A young man today, you can tell, he's very quiet. He needed a box. He had to ask me for a donation box. So I got him a paper box. And he came by, he was full of thank yous, a little quiet. He's gonna do a huge food drive, not only at Pontiac Anset High School, but at his church and several places in town. So he, you could tell this was hard for him to do. The presentation itself, oh, actually, I'll back up. All projects were approved on February fifteenth. Every single senior had an appointment. I'm still chasing down fifteen kids or so that were absent that day. They come in, they have their appointment with two teachers. They kind of do their little pitch of their project. Obviously, the EDDs are pre-approved, the Shark Tanks are pre-approved. And then they meet with their counselor for the very last time to make sure enough credits to graduate, everybody's on track. It's pretty great. The presentations this year are Friday, May third. Also happens to be prom day, very important day. And they come in, their presentations are between fifteen and twenty-five minutes. For some kids, fifteen minutes is really pushing their envelope. And for others, you have to put the hook on at twenty-five. The rubric is written too, to kind of quantify the amount of time that they present. And they come in very nervous and they leave very happy.
Thank you for that. Does anyone have any questions?
I have one question. So when I was teaching, I remember, we didn't call it Passion Projects, it was Senior Exhibition Projects, whatever. So is there a certain rubric you have for rigor that's...
Yes.
In the, in these? Because I don't mean to be critical, but there's one in here that's something about... And I don't want to embarrass any one particular person, so I'm trying to be... Contact Crest and CBS and Walgreens and, what, donate toothpaste to a shelter?
Yes.
So I question the rigor in that for a Passion Project.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
So let's back that up a little bit. This young lady wrote a very passionate email to me that she found out that women's shelters, there are certain things that they lack. There are certain things that are always donated. And then the mini toothpaste. So I said, "Okay, here's what you're gonna do. You're gonna reach out and initially what you want to do is just do a collection." I said, "No, no, no. It's really hard for a student to write an email to Procter and Gamble to see if they'll get something back." It's really hard for a student to write an email to CBS, to see, "How do I traverse to see if I can get a donation, whether it's three, twenty, thirty, eight hundred and fifty little things of toothpaste?" When that doesn't work, that's when we pivot and she comes up with a new idea. Ideas are only good until, I don't want to burn their passion. I want them to try it. And if it doesn't work out, she'll have to pivot and come up with a new idea. But for her, that, the experience of, "How do I drill down to the right person to see if I can actually get a donation?" That's hard for most of us to do. So, I think if the project's a little bigger than what you actually saw on paper, that's just a sampling I grabbed of projects that went through and were approved.
Well, no, not really. I'm disagreeing.
Okay.
But when I look at a majority of these, I can see the rigor in them and whatever. And so I know from experience, there are some students that this is a grueling process for them. Completely. I almost had one student who did not graduate because she could not do her senior exhibition project. It was painful. But I think it is our responsibility to make sure that there is a certain amount of rigor and that they're all held accountable to, or else otherwise, what's the point of the process? If we're just watering things down and pushing it through. I was never a big component of all of this, but this is what the state of Rhode Island requires our kids to do now on top of trying to get into college and everything else. I'm sorry if I digress, but anyway.
I'm not trying to water them down. I would say that we probably want to just keep them non-specific as to the projects we're talking about. If there's any that we have questions about the rigor, maybe it's a good sidebar to have.
Yeah.
I'm guessing more information.
I think I've just made my point. I think as a school, as the school committee, we need to make sure that our Passion Projects have the rigor that I think the state requires them to have. I'll leave it at that.
I think that's fair.
Okay, thank you.
And I'd be happy to share the rubric with you if that gives some control to the whole thing that, you know? No, they're not all necessarily tied to work-based learning at this point, no. It depends on the particular pathway that they're in. And remember, we have a lot of kids, to get out of high school is a struggle. So are we gonna tie them down to, "You spent sixty hours doing this and you hated every moment of it, and now let's talk about it?" So I think we've always kind of gone in the direction of, "What are you happy about? What do you want to talk about? What's interesting to you? And what are you passionate about? Not a perfunctory thing that you had to do." But that doesn't mean we couldn't do it in the future. It just means the guidance would have to change here.
The reason I'm asking, I mean, usually have the graders come up to middle school and move by taking. And last year, in the fifth graders, well, sixth graders, seventh and eighth school out there, when the fifth graders came in, all of a sudden, I'm standing there and it was like this big mass, exodus of kids coming out of the stands, and I was like, "What the hell?" And they were all coming to hug their elementary school teachers. And then, you know, they were, "Oh my God, have you grown, boy, you're doing this?" My surprise. So, the discussion came, not all of them loved to see them do the Passion Project. And then they started the process. Did they see the end product?
Renee secured Captain Isaac Payne. They'll be here on the...
In the process, yeah, we're in the process of doing that. The hope is that we have all three elementary schools. We definitely have one.
And I did ask, would she prefer that I schedule foster teachers with kids who grow up in foster? Just so that initial blush is like, "Ooh, this is great. Look how big they are."
It's just, why, like, who did you happen, you know?
All right. Aaron, I think you had a question as well?
Yeah, so I just wanted to double check. Do we still have the juniors and seniors do the twenty hours of community service or whatever like that, or no? Because I know when I was in high school, we used to do senior exhibition and then, what was it? Eleventh grade through the gym, we had to do the twenty hours.
Not from aware of. It's not a graduation requirement.
Not anymore?
No, no that ever actually was. I think it was, uh, "We'd like you to do this," and you did it. Thank you.
Mark, I think I saw your hand up as well.
Yeah, I know. Just one quick question. This is very helpful because I think a lot of the projects have changed since I've been here. So it's nice to see what other things are happening, despite whether we like agree or disagree, whether they count as projects. But I know you said that two teachers, the students sit with two teachers to get their project approved?
Yes.
Is it the same two teachers or how's that work?
It's just a, I have like my five go-to that come up and have annually approved the projects. They're not the same teachers that will judge them. No. This is like a quick, in, what do we think, present? It's like a, kind of like a pitch. And with the kids who are struggling, then those teachers conference with that student in hopes of coming up with an idea.
Okay.
All right, Beth, you have one minute. I'm just kidding, it's eight o'clock, we have to pivot.
Mary, how do we encourage more parents to come? Because, boy, they used to and now there's lucky if there's one and they're out in the wall.
It was seven percent last year. I went back, seven percent.
Seven?
Yeah, so that's very few.
I think we need to do some, like, the parents should see the cool stuff thing.
I'm sorry, what is she referring to? What part?
To the final presentation, correct. Yeah.
Amanda puts the call out, tells them they're welcome to come. Renee had done that in class as well.
Maybe that's a good Passion Project to figure out how to...
How do you get parents?
I mean, I would say, for me, I wouldn't want my parents there, but...
Right, your parents?
The last thing I want is my mom, who's also a teacher, looking at me in the back of the classroom, seeing how I present for thirty minutes, but every student's different.
Okay, but, excellent. My three children don't come near my school, so...
All right.
See, that's when I say you stand up and be a parent, saying, "I don't really give a crap what you think." I'm going.
Thank you very much for all of that. Now, we're gonna move ahead in the agenda to our public hearing on the FY twenty-four, twenty-five proposed budget. Mannon, do you want to give us a brief overview? There should be copies of the budget for anyone who would like a copy, but, I'm sorry, Dr. Palazzo, yeah. Does everyone have a copy of the budget who is looking to get one? They're also available electronically, I think, on the website at this point for those who want to save a tree.
So I think Amanda and I will do this together, if you're okay with that. I think the, this would be our third time we've discussed or presented the budget this way. We created the budget following the process we always do. Start in October, department leaders, budget preparers, building level admin, and then we sort of move forward from there. Please keep in mind that this budget includes two contracts that were negotiated, a two and a half percent increase for your teachers' union and a three percent increase for your education support personnel respectively. This is also the last year that we had ESER grant funding. That was, this was ESER three, so there were three years of grant funding. And we held positions with those. So we didn't make any cuts, any positions because we need the positions. And so we're presenting this budget to you for approval. And I don't know if there's anything you'd like to add or if we open it up for questions or if any committee members would add from this point.
I think it, we should just point out the increase possibly in the educational area. I think that's the only area that had a significant increase besides the salaries. That primarily is due to curriculums that need to be purchased. And also, your middle school and high school facilities are included in the educational budget. And we've got snow plowing, the fuel expense, which Brendan mentioned earlier, is over budget. You know, we tried to increase for that. And then electricity. So honestly, it's the facilities that's the bulk of the increase for the educational budget.
All right. So I can go on the table here on the committee if there's any questions that anyone has for this budget. I know we've all reviewed it and we've worked with our administrators over the past few months to develop it. And actually, before I go any further, I do want to thank you all and your teams for working so hard to put it together. I know you started quite a bit higher and you whittled it down. You've made some sacrifices and gotten to a closer place to where we had requested. I think we're indeed, we're all comfortable. So thank you for that extra effort. Committee members, do we have any questions? Aaron, go ahead.
I would just like to read into the record that for Foster, the total of, for the percent change for the appropriation is point seven three. For Gloucester, it is three point seven six. The total appropriation that the regional school district is looking for is two point seven six percent increase. I just would like that to be read into the record that way. For anyone that decides to listen to our recordings, would know what those amounts are.
Right. And just to clarify on that discrepancy between the two towns and why there is a difference, that has to do with the adjustment for the population swing. So each year, we do have to correct on the prior year's student body population, what percentage comes from Foster, what percentage comes from Gloucester. So unfortunately, our colleagues in Gloucester are feeling the pinch this year. But that does vary from time to time and that is why there is a difference. It's not just because we like Foster more, though we may. Does anyone else from the committee have any comments or questions? I'd entertain any comments or questions from the floor if they would like to. Just make sure when you come up to the microphone.
It's a public hearing, so if anybody wants to say...
Come on up. Just make sure we know who you are, where you're from. There he is.
Walter Steer from Gloucester. On page fifteen, it's the proration adjustment. And it gives the number of students as of October first, twenty twenty-two. Is that what these numbers, this budget is based on?
So the proration, it's always a year behind, so the enrollment is pulled twice a year.
Right.
For October first of twenty-two and then adjusted in June of twenty-three. So the budget is a year before. So this proration is based on June twenty-three.
So it... It seemed in that time period, we've had a, quite an increase in students.
Yeah, it looks like about thirty-nine additional students.
Gloucester about fifteen and Gloucester about twenty-four, it looks like. And so did nine students cause this adjustment?
Did nine?
Because in that, the increase between October and June, Gloucester had fifteen more, or nine more people than Foster enroll. So did that nine people cause this big adjustment?
So just to be clear, you're asking for what contributed the most to the swing? And if it's that, basically, that delta between that?
Well, it's always on the student population, I assume.
And it's also housing, isn't it about housing?
No, that's the debt service. That's debt service. There's two formulas, one for debt service and one for proration.
Is that an answer that we can help with Walt tonight? Or do we want to get back to him on that one?
I mean, yeah, I can get back to him on it.
Well, if you have the answer for the meeting, because I can ask the same question then.
Yeah, so in three weeks, when this comes up again, Walt will ask that. We should just be ready to have an answer for him.
Because, you know...
I get it.
This formula is so finicky that...
We will check the numbers, confirm it, and we will have an answer for you at that meeting.
Okay.
I don't think, I don't think we're gonna get it tonight.
No, that's fine. I didn't, you know, it's, it doesn't seem like much of a swing causes a big problem for one town or another. And for that little amount of students, it seems crazy to be going through this every year.
Right.
Thirty-nine students? Thirty-nine students?
Nine.
The delta between the two is like twenty-four and fifteen.
Gloucester had fifteen and we had...
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
Which is the nine, yeah.
Nine student difference.
Okay, that's why I was confused.
No, I know, it is...
I think the formula is crazy. And the fact that we have to do this every year and it makes it so difficult for the town councils with whom we work to plan is brutal. If anyone has a suggestion on how to change it, we're all ears.
But Brendan, that's why I asked for charter reviews so that we could try and change the charter and get more like some other regions where they have like every seven years, they reevaluate and you have like a five to six-year period where you know what you're having. So it would be great if we could get to that. But I have one question and I should know this answer and I don't. The out-of-district students, where are they in this? Where do they go? Do they go to Gloucester, Foster?
No, they don't count. They don't count in the proration.
You don't count them at all?
And also, it would be good if we could go back a year or two and see how many kids we had then from each town. It'd give somebody perspective of how... Because for the last few years, it seems like our local population has been pretty stagnant. Now it looks like this last year, we may have...
Like a five-year summary of Foster students, Gloucester students, out-of-district students? Just to see the trajectory?
It's good to see where we're headed.
I would be interested. I, I would be interested in that. I don't know if the other members.
Because I think before, we used to, I don't know if it was five years, but we used to have a couple of years. It used to give us how many children in each grade, and how many were from local, and how many were from pathways. Because I think you said earlier, it's about 70, 30 now? Is that what you said? About 70%?
Yes.
In-town, 30 from out. So that's, that's increasing a little bit.
That's just at the high school, though.
Right, that trip, yeah, right.
Does that seem like something that we might be able to put together? Great, yeah.
And I just, I was just looking at the snow plowing in each school. How did we come up with those numbers? Because we haven't had much of a history.
So the snow plowing actually hasn't been budgeted in the prior years. Honestly, it's just an estimate based on our current contract and the current rates.
So as you recall.
Can you share with us how?
We handled it in-house previously, now it's done on a contract basis, so we contract now.
Yeah, I realize that now. Can you share with us how we pay the vendor?
The RFP is a public document, so they don't ever let us see it. It's a public document. So there was a RFP, the business was.
No, do we pay by the inch, or?
Yeah, we pay by.
In a range.
Yes.
Like three, two to four, three to.
One to three, yes.
If it's under an inch, we don't bring the plow in.
Yeah.
But if it's one to three, and then three to six, we have, that's a public document.
Okay, that's all I have to know.
Yes.
Okay, and, you know, I, I did see at the high school, the, the oil went way up, but that's because we're not going to be using the wood burner, right?
It's, it's not functioning at the moment, so that's part of some of the capital.
Is it ever going to find, function again?
That's a larger, I, well, probably not.
No, but, that'd be good.
I, I don't, it, it's not really a sustainable system long-term, based upon, it, it was well-intentioned at the time, it served its purpose, but unfortunately, we're not finding it easy to service and maintain, both with people and parts, to the point where it just doesn't seem like a viable long-term system, and it's not working right now.
And one last question on the electricity. We have a contract with a solar.
We do.
Contract. How is that contract working out? And I think, I think we got like a 30% discount on our electricity.
I, I want to say it's closer to 20, but we do, it's a funky formula where we get a certain percentage of a certain percentage.
Well, I.
So I could, I could get.
I don't know if it's changed over time, you know, with the increase of electricity, I don't know. It was, I think, about almost 34% when we signed the contract.
It does not currently cover 34% of our electricity.
Maybe it only covered up, you know, at the, the rates back then were a lot lower.
Yeah.
So maybe, but.
It might have shrunk with time, what it's impacted.
I'd like to, sometime, if you could give, have a presentation on that contract at a school committee meeting. I think it'd be interesting for people to, and I'd be interested to see, you know, because I thought that was supposed to be for the life of the contract, and if it's changed, and.
I think that's a good suggestion for the newer committee members, too, just to understand that contract and the duration of it and how it works. That's certainly something I can share with the two chairs to put on a future meeting when it, when it times. I, I'd like to be refreshed. I think you, you raised a good question. I don't know that we have a really saw specifically the savings as a number.
I think Gary in your office could give us a.
There is a report that we can get from, from the vendor, yes.
You know, he, he handles the bills with them, and I, I think he would, could give you some up-to-date information on it.
Thank you, Walt. Come on down.
Thanks.
Yep.
Dr. Gattisparro, a couple of questions. Is this budget based on audited financial statements as of 12/31?
They are, they're unaudited figures as of June 30.
As of June 30?
Yes.
Unaudited? Okay, because I think we spent a lot of money on a consultant that was supposed to come in and help us fix all that, so that we wouldn't be making budget decisions based on unaudited financial statements. So that still hasn't been fixed?
The audit is in process, correct? Are we?
It is, it is final now.
Yeah.
But I mean, when, when we started the process and everything, it just, it was not. So, yeah, yeah, just recently.
Okay, when you say finalized, you mean the auditor, the auditor signed off on the report?
I think she's, I think she completed everything she needed to do and is in the process of signing off on the report.
Okay, so she's been in and she's done all the, all the workplace, you know, all the testing that she would have to do onsite for all that?
Yes.
Okay, but we still don't have her report. Don't we have to have that done by December 31st? Isn't all that supposed to be done by December 31st?
That is the deadline unless it's extended. We, we were granted an extension.
And what's that extension look like now, if you don't mind?
It was extended to January 31 for the, the financial statements, and then there's also the single audit, which is not complete until March 31.
Until March 31, okay. What are we going to be doing so that we don't face this next year, that we're making budget decisions based on unaudited financial statements, if anything?
I, I think we'll just continue to keep improving on the processes. We do have some new staff here that's learning the ropes. They're working through the system, and I think we will continue to see improvement. It's, it's a known issue. I think we've improved upon last year, and we're, we're going to keep, keep improving.
Okay. Is there any reason to expect adjustments after the audit report is final? Like, are they concerned about material misrepresentations or anything like that?
Are you, do you mean from the figures that are in the budget?
Yeah.
No.
Okay, thank you. And Dr. Palazzo, you mentioned ESAR funds, and you mentioned that a large part of the budget is driven by positions that were formerly paid by ESAR funds, but the ESAR funds are no longer available, and so now they're part of our, of our budget. Is that, did I understand that correctly?
I didn't say a large portion.
Okay, all right, you're just going to correct me, that's why I'm asking. All right, how much, how much are we putting into our budget now that was formerly paid for with ESAR funds?
Two positions.
So how much? Two positions?
Two top-step teachers plus benefits. Two top-step teachers plus benefits.
Okay, so about how much?
Top-step 100, benefits 40, so about $300 or so, $1,000.
Yes.
So $300,000 formerly paid, approximately, right?
Yes.
Formerly paid for with ESAR funds, and we've decided to keep those positions and roll that into our budget?
Correct.
This time. Okay, why do we need those positions?
I, I don't think we would have positions in the budget that they didn't find value in. That's something we can get those, you know, more specific information perhaps for the next meeting.
That would be great, because I, I would like to know what the value added for that is. Like, we survived with it, without ESAR funds, right, so what's changed, that would be my question.
We're not just looking to survive, though, we're looking to improve on what we do. So I would say that perhaps by using those ESAR funds, we, we found that we were providing services or increasing our ability to deliver in a way that we worked before, and as a committee, we've decided to retain that.
Okay.
So I mean, I don't know that it's, we're not looking to just survive here, you know.
Fair answer, thank you. And then, you know, it's kind of hard to read this online, so I do appreciate that it was online beforehand. It's kind of wiggly to read on a screen.
That's improvement, too, because.
That is an improvement, and so I want to recognize that. So I, I don't have photo form questions tonight, because I was kind of waiting for the, you know, to see it in a format that looked right, but one of the things that I had seen online was education programs. So what, what education programs? We're looking at almost 20% increase overall for that line item. It's discussed very briefly in the portrait section, looking at page four, about halfway down. Educational programs are budgeted at an increase due to multiple factors, including curriculum and technology expenses, and it looked like some of this was being driven in the social sciences. I know that the state of Rhode Island recently came out with new MGSS standards. Is that what we are having to buy and purchase new curriculum to serve?
No, Amanda Raymond shared a little bit of that, that oil, electricity, so the educational programs are for us to function, and, and that is tied into our educational programs, so it's curriculum, it's technology, it's oil, it's electricity for both middle school and high school, so those have seen a significant increase.
Sure. I mean, we're all feeling it at home, too. So educational programs doesn't mean curriculum. Educational programs doesn't necessarily mean specific things that the student learns in class. It could cover the facilities.
I think I understand what you're saying. So the way that that's phrased, it may not capture exactly everything that's in there, where we say educational programs, right?
Right, okay.
Maybe we can clarify that when.
On page eight, it does, it does say, materials used in association with education of conundrants at middle school and high school students. Additionally, the school program budgets include all expenses associated with the management and facility, maintenance of the high, middle school and high school, so it says it on page eight. We can add it to the beginning as well, if that clears up completely.
It's in there.
It's in there. So I think now we have an answer.
Okay, but, but we're looking at half a million dollars. Is there, is it broken down in here somewhere on a different page that I could go inform myself further as to what that 500, you know, how do I take and tie out half a million dollars on this budget?
That would be included in your detail pages, in the back.
Okay. So.
In the specifically, let's see.
We've got four pages of detail here.
Pages 20 to 35 are your non-salary detail pages, and then there are grand totals for each school.
Okay, so if I were going to add the dollar change for the pages that you mentioned, the detail pages, I would come up to $545,000 and whatever. Okay, all right, thank you. How much of this budget relates to spending on diversity, equity, and inclusion programs, approximately, percentage-wise?
Is that, I don't know, is that a number that you can just generate offhand, or is that, are you looking for an estimate, or?
Just a vague one, I'm not going to hold it to you, but I'm just trying to get a sense of, you know, how much we're spending on diversity, equity, inclusion, and how much we're spending on facilities, operations, curriculums, things that act, that, you know, are more closely related to core functionality learning for the students.
I mean, I defer to Dr. Palazzo on, on how to answer that, but I don't.
Yeah, we don't have a program identified as diversity, equity, and inclusion that the budget would specifically say this is a diversity, equity, and inclusion.
Like category, category or tag, or something like that?
No.
You don't break it out that way?
It's materials needed for the classroom, prepared by the budget preparers for each department. That starts at the building level, goes to the building level administrators, then comes to me, and Amanda, we sit. So it's curriculum, it's material supplies, out-of-district learning experience, experiences, transportation, athletics.
Things like that? So it's all embedded? We're not going to be able to pull it out?
I don't see how you would.
I don't know what.
It's cooked into the pie, you know?
Okay, all right, that's fair. And I guess my final, what I didn't get a clear understanding, and maybe it's in here and I just didn't see it, what percentage of the budget is allocated for administrative things versus actual instructional materials? Is there a way for me to clearly kind of pull that out? Like, we're spending 80% of the budget on student instructional things, and then 20% on administrative expenses?
What do you mean administrative expenses, I think would be my, my, my question. We follow the UCOA codes that we're required to follow, and they separate how items need to be budgeted and what they're used for. That's what all those codes sit over there on, on the left-hand side of, of, of the budget.
So, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go, no, go ahead.
If you want to look at page 12, on your, your comprehensive summary, at the bottom, it gives you totals for the salaries, employee benefits, educational programs. The central office facility operations is going to be your, I think what you're looking for.
Okay.
Yeah.
I want to review page twelve.
I didn't know if that's.
Yeah. It probably does.
Yeah, yeah.
It probably does. And what else come, is coming up? Like, we talked about for the ESAR funds, right? Do we have any ESAR money left over, or is it all gone?
No, it ends, it ends after the school year.
After the school year, and we spent it all, right? We haven't left anything on the table?
Haven't left anything on the table.
Okay. And other than the two positions that we previously talked about, are there, are they, are there continuing expenses that are, used to be funded by the ESAR funds that are no longer funded by ESAR and are now baked in this budget?
No.
No? Okay, great. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else have any questions, comments, concerns, compliments? All right, I think that closes our public hearing on the budget. I would now, moving ahead to the, we'll just close that one out, entertain a motion regarding the budget.
Move to adopt the fiscal year 2024, 2025 proposed budget as presented.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Does anyone have any other discussion to add? All right, all those in favor? All right. Opposed? Abstentions? The motion passes. On we go. All right, jumping back up and saying, thank you, everyone, for presenting and for your questions, and again, thank you very much to our administrative staff, the budget committee for meeting and, and trying to do such a great job on that, and doing such a great job on that, I should say. Principals updates. We're back to it. All right. Yeah.
So I did submit that earlier, so if you have an idea, I can report. I know you've agreed, so I'm not going to read everything to you. Is it a little overview that this week, March 7th, our second trimester marking period ends?
Principal Mark, would you be able to speak into the microphone, my esteemed colleague, Mr. Rizzo? Well, we're just, we're being recorded, so.
Come on over to my cafeteria, boys.
Yeah, that'd be great. Might be too loud.
It might be too loud, thank you. So just basically, a little overview, academic information, this week, our second trimester marking period ends on March 7th, and we'll move into our third, and final for the, this school year. As I mentioned before in our prior report, our instructional coordinator is participating in some professional development with RIDE. That has ended, and now we're going to go to, as we move into the testing season for RICAS, implementing some of those strategies to get our students prepared. The testing windows are there, and I did send out a newsletter to parents, which have the dates in there as well. Our scheduling team, as part of our school improvement team, has been working and trying to come up with a schedule, looking at all of the things they'd like to have in it, that would certainly sort our students academically, behaviorally, socially, emotionally. We've come up with a draft, our next step, and I've already reached out to Dr. Palazzo to meet with her, discuss the draft, come up with a decision, present it to our staff for feedback, and I'll meet with IT to start implementing that in the, if it approves.
Could I ask a question regarding topic two?
Sure.
I know that the pain school uses the satchel pulse screening tool. What does the middle school use, and is it compatible where the testing that they, the screening that they did at the pain school?
Would you do scrolling, it's not the satchel, we use the SOS. Oh, I'm sorry, it's kind of, yeah, it's similar. The school, yeah. Yeah. Yep.
Is there a way, is there a way that we could get all schools to use the same, so like, it'd be compatible?
Well, we're starting, when we started that process, and I know Ms. Murray and Ms. Grindel were part of it, we found that the satchel was very elementary-driven, so try to use it at the secondary level, even sixth grade, it was kind of iffy, but seventh, eighth, and going further.
So if they're screening the kids in fifth grade now that are coming into the middle school?
Mm-hmm.
Is it, is it worth screening the kids in fifth grade to see if it's not compatible, or if it's, is it too, do they do screening in sixth grade?
Yes.
Again?
Yes, yeah, we do it again, yeah. We've been doing it every, well, since we had that grant, I've been doing it for the last two, two, three years.
I just didn't know if it was somehow a way to get everyone aligned.
On the same one, I know, I know. We did try to, but there aren't very many products that have that alignment.
Thank you.
We had a big day on February 15th. We had a women's STEM conference and a co-op here for the middle school. Morning took place outside of the classrooms in a very different way. We had people come in. A women's STEM conference was sponsored by a gongalier's team here at the high school, and girls six through eight participated in several workshops, as well as heard from a keynote speaker, who were very interesting. Lieutenant Alice Pegley, she didn't speak about do this, do that. It was, I didn't do this, or I failed at this, and this is how I got to where I am now. So it was very interesting, and that was a, a lot of feedback from the girls as well. I'm sorry, I'm trying to speak to everybody, so I'm turning around. So it was very interesting to hear from her. There were also several workshops that took place in our classrooms. We broke the girls down into several groups. We had, I would say, over 30 workshops total, and I just gave you some of the ones that were there. It was interesting to have some of our alumni and townspeople come in, plant science, biomedical, Dr. Kristen Hopeless, who actually was one of my first students way back when, when I started here, so it was good to see a lot of our, like I said, alumni come back. Chief Grindel from Foster was in there. like I said, alumni come back. Chief Grondell from Foster was in there. Grace Glasgow, who graduated recently. So we had a lot of those kids come in and people come in to do interactive workshops where students actually had hands-on time with them to learn more about their areas. And then we have some planned co-op here for the Boys in the Building in grade six to eight, and a lot of the teachers took this role on, professionals from various, again, areas came in. Mr. Fiano, the high school teacher here who does food tech, spoke about science and T D programs here at the high school and their connections to cooking, hospitality, life skills, agriculture, farm-to-table. And then again, some speakers, not all of them listed here, there were quite a few as well. Many of our teachers reached out to family members. Alexandra Chulley is Mrs. Corey's father. Drew Lombardi is Mrs. Lombardi's husband. So we reached out to get as many people in to work with our gentleman as well, Mr. Tim Coy, who works at the district anyway. And so I just want to say, it was a really great day. We worked up until lunch. The students had a great experience doing something different, but learned quite a bit, and were able to explore careers and learn more and ask questions. The biggest thing, they were able to ask questions and be interactive, and the kids liked that. So that was our big day.
Thank you so much for that thorough update. Does anyone else have any questions? All right.
Thank you.
Onto the high school. Great, thank you.
Great, good evening. So I do send out a newsletter each week, and I didn't want to rehash that. I feel that my principals' updates are better served if I sort of give you some inner workings of the structures that we have in place at the high school so that when you all are building policy and having discussion, you understand what's going on inside the building. So my principal's report focuses on four particular squares, but in addition to that, I did have Ms. Fratz also put my newsletter in, which I also emailed to all of you. So the first square really focuses on supporting student behavior. We know this is very important, specifically coming off of COVID, seeing the social, emotional issues that our students are facing. And so we have a two-tiered approach to this. The first tier is our MTSS system. That is a team of teachers, the social worker, the school psychologist, the administration, where we really focus on individual students. And so at the high school, we have a system in place where we reach out to teachers, we get feedback on individual students who may be having a difficult time academically, behaviorally, socially, and we develop a plan in which we bring the parents in and we really put a plan in place for them. And the reason why that's important is because I want to talk about the next team. So we do have that MTSS team that talks about individual students, but I really wanted to also focus this year on what are we doing for our tier one intervention, meaning our whole school? How are we promoting positive behavior amongst our whole student body? And so this year, I developed a promoting positive behavior team. I have an awesome group of teachers that are volunteering their time after school to really put this in place. And some of the work that we're doing is really instituting uniform expectations across the board for students. So for example, if a student is tardy to teacher A's class and tardy to teacher B's class, we have the same expectations school-wide. So students really understand what makes a successful scholar and how to behave appropriately in, in a school setting. We're also doing a lot of work to promote positive behavior. So we have a lot of kids doing some really great things and really doing some awesome acts of kindness. And so the group of teachers that I'm working with put together a challenge in February for teachers to complete the ticket. You can see the sample below where if they caught a student doing something awesome that day, they write out a ticket, they put it in a box in the main office, and then the student was entered in a raffle. We pulled ten student names out. The kids got ten dollars off at the school store, so they won something. And they also got communication home. So we did a positive reach out home to really reinforce that good positive behavior. March is acts of kindness. So as teachers are seeing students participate in acts of kindness, they're getting these positive tickets, again, to be entered into a raffle to get a positive call home. And so we really felt like that was important because oftentimes we focus on, you know, consequences, but we want to make sure that we're focusing on promoting positive behavior. I'd really like to give just a shout out to the teachers that have volunteered their time. I, I sent out an email and said, hey, I have this idea. Who's interested in joining me? And I got a whole bunch of teachers really dedicated to being on this team. The second square is something that, it's a little bit boring to talk about, but I think it's important. It's, we're implementing an e-hol path system. And so instead of using a paper pass, students use this e-hol pass system. It has been a game changer. So this building is huge. It's difficult to manage. I had a lot of wanderers coming over from one building to the other, and I didn't, you know, I had to keep monitoring, yes, you have a pass, but what building are you supposed to be in? You don't need to use the bathroom way over here when you're from that building. And the e-hol pass system has really allowed me to, I have an iPad, I'm able to walk around, kind of check in where students are supposed to be. It's been instrumental in campus security. I'm able to quickly identify, yes, that's someone walking in the hall who's supposed to be there. It pops up with the student's picture, what class they've left from, how long they've been out of class. Gives me some data on frequent flyers. So if I have a kid that's been asking to miss every single class and has been out a long duration of that class, I'm able to have a conversation with that student and say, you know, we really want to maximize instructional time. What can I do to help you, you know, stay in your class longer so that you're not looking for those, those wandering breaks? I want to give Dave a shout out. I think he's still here. There he is. He's been awesome at unrolling this. We gave each teacher a kiosk in their classroom so that they're able to utilize, the students are able to utilize the pass system and exit, and then it pops up on my iPad, so I'm able to see it. So I know not the most exciting topic, but it really has been awesome in helping with security, student safety, and maximizing instructional time.
You should share that with other schools. It's an awesome idea.
Yeah. Yeah, so Dave, Dave researched it. He implemented it, and he has just been awesome at working side by side with me to unroll it. So I, I want to give him credit for that. The next square that I just want to talk about is some of the things that we're going to be doing to combat vaping. So we know it's a problem. A lot of high schoolers don't understand the ill effects of vaping, and so we really want to, again, get on the other side of it. We're always on, you were caught vaping. Here's the punitive measure, but we want to be on the other side of it and educating students, educating parents about the health impacts on vaping. So I will be attending next week. They're going to be doing the presentation for administrators, specifically for administrators on running a vape-free school. So I will be attending that. I think Dr. Palazzo's attending as well, so that way we can bring our knowledge back here and tighten up whatever we need to tighten up in terms of keeping the school vape-free and getting some ideas for how we can continue to educate students and parents. And then we also have, this was in the newsletter, a gentleman coming, coming in, Chris Dorville. He's the clinical director at Ocean State Recovery Center. He's going to be working with our P E health classes to educate students on the dangers of vaping, the health effects of vaping. And then finally, I have several emails out to some different presenters, specific to athletics, specific to athletes, because believe it or not, we have population of athletes who are vaping. Again, they just, they don't understand. It's marketed to, to young adults, to kids, and they, they don't really understand the impact that it can have on their health, but also on their athletic abilities. So Mr. Joyce and I have been working to hopefully bring someone, someone in specific to our athletes.
Are you finding most of the vaping use is tobacco, nicotine, or is it marijuana too?
Mostly the vape juice, the regular, yeah.
Traditional?
The traditional. Yeah, it's very rare that we find the marijuana THC one. It does happen, but it's, it's pretty rare. And then finally, my final square, my favorite square, I'm going to put my literacy coordinator hat on. I did speak a little bit about literacy the last time I was up here, and then I believe it was Aaron had asked for some specific data points. So I was hired in 2016 to come over as a literacy specialist here at Ponte Gans at high school. I then moved to assistant principal, I then moved to principal, but the entire duration, I have continued to hold my role as literacy coordinator. And since that time, so the historical perspective from 2017 through 2023, our PSATs in English Language Arts has gone up from sixty-nine point nine percent to seventy-six point eight percent. SAT went to fifty-nine point one percent to sixty-seven percent. We have seen a seventy-one percent decrease in the number of students needing intensive literacy intervention at PHS. And please keep in mind that the increases include during COVID. So in the year where most schools went down, we still trended upward. I will be presenting at the Massachusetts Reading Annual Conference in April, and we have ten teachers from Foster-Groster coming to that conference. So that's going to be huge. We can all bring our knowledge back and continue to work on literacy. I will also be on March eleventh going to Captain, Captain Isaac Payne to start working with the elementary teachers so that we have a consistent K through twelve literacy structure. That's my update.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And regarding the literacy, I remember when you actually got hired, that was one of the things that I think Dr. Palazzo at the time brought up, was your background in literacy. And it was, it's so important because I know my background's more science and engineering and all of that, but there's a remarkable number of folks who struggle to communicate in their written word what they want to do, what they want to say, and what they need other people to do. And it just, it's, it's great to see that, that trend. So, thank you. All right, did anyone else have any questions?
I just wanted to say thank you for the, the positive program that you're unrolling. I just think it's really important. And, you know, I can imagine, you know, in a huge, a school this big with the number of kids that you have, managing the, the negative behaviors could probably just take up all of your time. So I think, you know, making the extra effort and going the extra mile to, to share that feedback with families is really important. So thank you for that.
All right, great. Well, moving on, we have our superintendent's report.
It's not as exciting as Ms. Marcus or Ms. Grondell's. I don't know if anyone has any specific questions for me, but there is a legal absence to approve on there.
We do have two items to take action on. So I would entertain a motion regarding the Human Resource Generalist Contract.
So I make a move to approve the Human Resource Generalist Contract as presented.
Great. So we have a motion and a second. And as I remember, because we did discuss this at length, I believe at our last meeting.
Yes.
Any other discussion?
I was going to say, actually, it was, it was two meetings ago, but this is not a new position. It's a replacement position. You had someone in that, in that position, and we've been seeking to fill it since August.
All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The motion passes. And I'd entertain a motion regarding the leaves of absence.
Move to approve the leave of absences as presented.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The motion passes.
The other thing I'd like to add, as you noticed, that we're, we've hired a point four French teacher. We have gone through the scheduling process, started the scheduling process at the high school, and we will have most likely more than one section of interest for French. So we're able to get a point four French teacher. So we're excited to expand our world language and looking at expanding what we're doing at the middle school with Spanish.
Trade, yeah.
Is that looking at the path?
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I just, can I just add that the email you sent out to parents about that was very informative. I think that, you know, it's easy for parents to kind of miss that information. So thank you for that email.
Well, and as we all know, as we become such a global world, you know, language is just going to be something, you know, here in America, we're so behind the eight ball.
Train the brain.
Yeah, train the brain.
All right. So we get another opportunity to take a look at the school calendar.
Oh, first time here. You already did it in foster. This is the first time.
So move to approve the 2024, 2025 Foster-Groster Regional School District Calendar as presented.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just have one quick question.
Has this been reviewed with the teachers?
So this is different from?
We don't have to.
We don't have to, but we follow, there has been some preliminary conversations with respect to the option of February break, and we are keeping February break in. We are following RIDE's suggested calendar. We are adding one more piece, and I don't know if this was your question or not, but we are, by regulations, allowed to have a transition day for one grade only, as long as it's a full day. And you're only allowed to have that at secondary. So we will have sixth graders have a transition orientation day. Ninth graders have a transition orientation day, and it does not count against the 180. So we have added that in there. It's an important, it's an important transition and to have the whole building and programs.
As an old timer, we did that years ago, and it was very beneficial to have sixth grade come in for one day and get their feet wet and just be able to say, oh, the bathroom's here before, I mean, at the Pacific Building, and people, all the different, it was really, it was really the struggles. I'm glad to hear that.
All right, thank you.
Great. Any other discussion, I think, Erin?
So, again, people are probably going to hate me. I just have one stupid question. Just because why are we having, why didn't we start after Labor Day? I know, again, that's probably your question every time. It's just, what's the importance of, say, because they're only there the Thursday and the Friday, and then they have that Monday off. So what's the importance of, say, those two days if you can't just say push it back to that Tuesday the third after Labor Day? If that makes any sense.
I can say since I've been here, I'm in my ninth year, so I'll be completing nine years. This has been the schedule that we've, we've followed. So I follow the same schedule. It's been, it's been approved, and I haven't had any reason to change that, nor I've hadn't asked to change that. And it follows RIDE's suggested calendar where they say you can start. So I think there's a benefit to the way we have the, the day structure.
No, and I completely, I just didn't know if we should have, say, the, you know, the eighth, the sixth, and the ninth, say, maybe come in that Friday, or, you know, that's just what I'm thinking, and then on that Tuesday, everything starts. You know what I mean? Because I feel like you lose two days of, say, learning, because again, the first day is what, syllabus and everything else about the course, courses?
But it's also the time that we come together as a school community and do some assemblies and fun stuff and making everybody happy to be here again.
I can say the first two days or the first day of school is always the first day of school. It's not going to change. We have it on a Monday or Tuesday or Friday or Thursday. It will always be some things you just have to do on the first day when they come in. We found this to be really beneficial. I think adding that transition day for the sixth grade and ninth grade allows them to have a little more structure. The other two days, when the tenth, eleventh, the twelfth, already know. We've always tried to fit an orientation day and walk the building, get to know the building, and our tenth, eleventh, the twelfth, or seventh and eighth grades already know that. So.
I just didn't know if there was any, you know, possibility, just saying, but, you know, about starting, because again, they're only coming in for that Thursday and that Friday, and then they start a four-day weekend at that point, or a three-day.
They think that's a good transition time, too, that they have two full days of learning their classes, seeing what they need. They get the Monday break, and then you start fresh Tuesday, and then it's only a four-day week, which is a little bit more palatable. And it also, I mean, there's a reality that we get out June thirteenth.
Right, it's, it's the, it's the end of the, the end of the schedule.
They're much more excited to get back than they are to stay in.
No, I know, because I was also here, but I also remember being, as a senior, where my graduation was pushed back to that Friday night, and I think it was like the 21st. We weren't able to graduate on the seventh or the sixth or anywhere like that, because I remember back in 2011, when they had us wait the two weeks in order to graduate.
That stays low.
So. But that's just.
I'm not sure that that's a problem that we will solve on this day.
Right. No, I understand that. I just didn't know if there was any reason as to, about starting after Labor Day. But, okay, no problem.
Any other discussion? Go for it.
As a parent, I can tell you the parents love coming in. The kids go for two or three days on that first week, then they get a three-day weekend, then it's a four-day week, and then to just ease them in after several vacation. It's very, very popular with parents that we don't want to move past Labor Day, I, I wouldn't think. But let me know if you hear differently. Thanks.
All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The motion passes. Bond Counsel. So this is the one that our Capitol Projects Committee will be advancing. If you don't mind, we just put the motion through first, and then maybe we have a general discussion? Would that be okay?
Oh, I'm sorry.
This is your chance to shine.
I would like to make a motion to hire a, that the committee that we hire a bond counsel attorney to advise the school committee on the possibility of floating future bonds, and that this hire of a. and that this hire of a bond counsel attorney is not to exceed an expense of over $10,000.
Second. All right, so now, general discussion. As background for the rest of the committee, we are looking at some very large capital projects over the next few years. I think everyone's aware of that, whether it's for the athletic fields, whether it's for some large infrastructure projects that are required at our middle school, at our high school, which cannot reasonably be funded with traditional capital project funding. As part of that process, we need specialized legal counsel to advise us on how the bonding procedure works, what the calendar looks like, and what steps need to be done so that we are basically following the law. This bond council's specific role is to guide us through that process, to advise our committee, and to keep us moving forwards so that the taxpayers and the community have an opportunity to vote up or down on these bonds that will be presented in the future. Any other discussion?
I think maybe one other thing we might, might want to add, Brenda, Brendan, sorry, Brendan, is that some of these big projects, we realize just can't fit into the regular budget. And so these are huge expenses that we felt needed to be projected out in a bond form to be able to be affordable.
And this is the first step in that process, and we look forward to sharing pretty pictures and budgets of all of these items as soon as we can with this guidance. All right. Absent any other discussion, I'll entertain a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right, we have a bond counsel. Capital projects updates. Well, we have, we already approved, no, we didn't approve. I got you.
So I move to approve the stage two project, five-year plan as presented.
Great. Any discussion? Just as an update, this is a procedural item in that we've already, we do need to present this to the state of Rhode Island to maintain our capital reimbursements for our ongoing capital projects and future capital projects. Any other discussion?
Are we talking about this page?
That's part of it, yes.
Can you remind me, I feel like I asked this last year and I just forget again, is the lower number or the higher number more priority?
The lower number.
Lower number, okay.
Lower number is...
Okay.
And that, that's just one page of like the 500-page document.
Right, yeah, yeah.
All of the drawings and everything are in that, that...
Yeah.
I would just like to say that I think the capital projects committee, I'm new on it, it's chaired by Brendan and Steve. It's very impressive, and you guys have really done a great job. I would just want the community to know, I think, how thorough you are as you're looking at everything and facing a lot of the things that sort of fell, fell in the, in the background before, and just wanted to shout out to that. Thank you.
That's very nice of you to say. I would say that all of the credit is due to our, our staff, our administrators, who really do put in a lot of time and extra effort. And I would say, I do work in a professional position in a lot of different districts as a designer, and the, the investment of the staff and the personnel in this community and the buildings that they have here shows above and beyond what you see in some of the other communities. They live here, they believe in these places, and they want them to be around for a long time to come. And that's something you don't always see. So I would, the credit is due to them, not to those who sit on the committee. Sure. All right. Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Policy subcommittee updates.
As of right now, unfortunately, we do not have a policy subcommittee. We're still working on a couple of policies, like student-staff contact, those types of policies. So we are working on that. We're going to be working on more of that for next month's meeting. This month's meeting, unfortunately, we didn't have a quorum, so we did have to cancel this past policy subcommittee meeting, but we're hoping to just hit the ground running and hopefully bring in those policies before this full committee within the next, the next meeting or so.
Awesome. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for our policy subcommittee? All right. Public comment. We're almost there. Walt.
I took a look up at the field the other, at the last meeting you talked, you had a washout.
Yes.
It came up a few times and it was never fixed, but then I came up this Sunday and it was fixed. And it did withstand the two inches of rain we had the night before, so that was a good thing. But we may have two to four more inches of rain tomorrow night. And I'm not an expert, don't get me wrong, but it looks like one of the problems is between the tennis courts and the football field, we've regraded it, not regraded, but we put more material in there. And I think it was just enough material. I think that's where the water, it used to wash that area out too, but it at least it didn't come out to the field, and it went down. I think it came down to the school over here, some of it. But I'm afraid with that much water in a short period of time, that may wash out again.
You, you might be right. So I don't want to speak entirely on behalf of Steve, but I can kind of pick off a little bit of this. The, the main work to repair the, obviously, the sinkholes that appeared is scheduled to a court in the coming weeks. Because of all of the moisture we've had, we can't really drive equipment out there. So anything you're probably seeing right now are just temporary repairs?
I believe he's actually referring to the gravel washout.
Yeah, the gravel washout, you know, from the upper level to the lower level.
Never mind the one I...
The nature of the project is basically that we identified the football field of the track at a lower elevation, and there's no brick gravel, so there ain't really no substantial material to keep any of the erosion control, so to speak, from, you know, obviously, grabbing the track downhill on the track. So what you see out there is, yes, you did put some temporary stone dust out there to try and create a burn to mitigate the amount of water that's washing down onto the track. But again, these are all long-term...
I think we'll be doing a lot more temporary repairs until we have a permanent fix in place.
This, this situation up here has been, that configuration's been there for a long time, and this is the first time I ever remember a washout there. So...
I have pictures from, from this winter where the entire field was submerged in over two feet of water. I have pictures of the front fireway of the, basically, three or four feet deep amount of water that was washing over the track. So I think a lot of this is a nature of the, basically, the weather of this year and the substantial amount of rain that we, we've had.
We've had, I think we've had, you know, within the last 15 years, we've had worse storms than this, and I don't remember it ever washing out. So something, it doesn't take much of an elevation change, it only takes an inch or two, and once that water starts going in one direction, then it just keeps digging out. So I know you're going to get a bond counsel. The last meeting, you talked about a turf field. You're going to have to tell the people of Gloucester that you're maintaining what we buy for you up here, because I feel in the past, we may not have. And I think a lot of that stuff that's up there, almost all of it, is less, is 10 years or less old. And, you know, some of it, like the football field, I know there is some small, you know, those things happen, but I, I don't know how long the water was washing into the track there. You know, someone should have noticed that within a couple of days. But it sat like that for, you know, at least a month, maybe more, before it was, I was happy to see it cleaned up, and they did a good job, but...
Unfortunately, because it's the middle of winter after that substantial rain, all that material throws to the track, and the concern with trying to, fortunately, would be damaging and compromising the integrity of the track. So we specifically waited until, I think, it was August, until we had 53 plus butter paste, and then we did go out there and start cleaning.
So it's, it's...
Maybe because you wanted to use the track, because they see people were out there using it. I'm not saying you didn't, you know, I think we had some warmer weather where it could have been cleaned up earlier. That's all I want to say, you know.
I think we've, we've heard the message. I think Steve's aware, the team's aware of it. We now have another staff member who might be able to help diversify some of that workload. So it's, it's a work in progress, and I think they're doing a great job overall.
You know, Gloucester, you're building a police station, you have a problem. Gloucester, that's a goal. They're going to have problems with this. So anybody that was looking for bonds and stuff right now with the high interest rates, it may be a little tough.
I, I agree with you, and that's something that we can't really control, right? What we can do is we can identify need here and what our responsibility is, which is to maintain a positive, healthy learning environment. And then it's up to the taxpayers, right?
Yeah, well...
It's up to us to make that pitch.
Both Gloucester and Gloucester have very high taxes.
I get it. I get it.
And if we're asking, you know, you can see your police station, how, how costs have gone up. Anything we plan on doing, you can plan paying another 25 or 30% easy.
As I enter year seven of that committee, I am painfully aware of that six-month request it means, what it looks like, so, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And is there going to be a presentation on the turf field at the meeting? I know Mike said something about it last meeting.
So I think once we're...
We need to circle back with that group. There have been some things that came, not on the project as a whole, but I think we need to circle back with that team to make sure that we have the right, the right message to put out there. We want it to be right.
Can we talk about the bound, the bond counsel and stuff like that before we can...
I think it's more just, we need to get the right people to, we have not been able to do that just yet for a variety of reasons.
Okay.
You're right.
That's it.
Yeah. Any other public comment? All right. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
All those in favor?